And who is Task Force Nine?
That's kind of hard to say because so much of what they do is top secret. But, you know, basically they're a special operations force. Everything they do is classified. We were only able to patch together little parts of it. And one of them was a really intriguing report. Top secret report that went through the inspector general's office. They were seeing all sorts of strikes that seemed to be hitting targets where there may have been enemies, but civilians were getting hit too. And, and they started to notice something really odd that repeatedly in strike after strike, they were calling them in saying that these were self-defense strikes, but...
What does that mean?
Well, self-defense, there are rules for when you can hit a target. And a lot of times the, the people that decide whether those rules are being followed are, are in some command center somewhere. And they're going to go through it and they're going to give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But there is a way that you can skip all of that oversight very quickly by saying that, you know, you're under imminent threat and you need to defend yourself. Under the law of war, that is always allowed. And that allowed the task force to skip all of the officers, all of the oversight, all of the lawyers that had rule books and talk directly to the aircraft that were going to hit their target. And so they could hit what they wanted to essentially with no one second guessing them.
So it's essentially, this was supposed to be an extreme measure, but it had become a habit that they were relying on.
It had become the status quo. And the people in the operations center would go back and sometimes review these strikes and look for evidence of self-defense. And they would never see, or at least rarely see, anything that showed that troops were under fire. And in the case of this strike that we've been talking about, four days after it was, you know, marked down as self-defense, satellite imagery shows that coalition forces came in with a bulldozer and literally buried the evidence. You know, in a real way, the deaths of women and children were covered up.
So now there's really no way to get a precise count. The evidence is actually buried.
I mean, the American military tried to make this the most precise and accountable air war in its history and report everything publicly and investigate every single casualty. And it held that up to show that it was being transparent and accountable. But in fact, a lot of those processes were used to do the opposite. You know, you could hold up a report that said that nothing happened even though it was totally clear, even to the military, that something had. And the thing is, like, all of this stuff is classified. We don't really get to see any of it. We don't know the scope. One of the few glimpses that we get into it is this one airstrike that all these guys were trying to report.
Right. So what I'm taking away from this story then is that there really isn't any accountability when it comes to airstrikes in the US military.
Well, I think that there are people in the military that really want there to be accountability and have worked hard to try and ensure that there's accountability. But the system that they've created is, is still so flawed that it doesn't really tell us anything meaningful about, you know, how many civilians were actually killed. I mean, think about it. Here was a case where 70 people were...
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for November the 15th, 2021 is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here and foremost present. Tonight, our invocation will be delivered by Councilmember Bill Wim D. Best Pitch. And following his invocation, I'm pleased to say that the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America will be, will be led by Boy Scout Troop 17 sponsored by St. John's Episcopal Church. And we're certainly glad to see all of them here with us tonight. If you would stand for Councilman Best Pitch and remain standing for the pledge. With humble hearts, we bow before our Creator, in whom we live and move and have our being, who has made us all children, all brothers and sisters. But we don't always treat each other that way. Who has given us a beautiful planet with so many things that we can enjoy, so much beauty, so much abundance. But we don't always take care of it and we don't share that abundance the way that we May we dedicate ourselves to doing everything we can to treat each other with love, dignity, and respect, and to leave this world in a little better shape than we found it. Amen. Amen. All right, troops. Yes, sir.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I want to thank the troops for coming tonight. And I've asked them to briefly introduce themselves to council. And so I will start, and you will bring back to my, thank you, name and age, school, whatever you want to say.
All right. I would like to thank you guys for having us tonight. And my name is Beck Hanson. I go to North Cross School and I'm a senior there. And we're going to go along down the line and introduce all of ourselves.
My name is Gavin Futrell. I attend Patrick Henry High School and I'm in ninth grade. And I have a question for you two, you guys. Would it be possible that I may say a prayer for tonight? All right, thank you. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you all for attending tonight and everyone who is attending and watching this on TV. I pray for everyone who is in the hospital and is not feeling well today, and I hope that they may feel better. I pray for the misfortunate people who do not have as much as I do and everyone in this room, and I pray that their lives may take a turn. I hope everyone here is able to have a wonderful Thanksgiving and is appreciative for what they have. I just want to thank you for blessing everyone here today. And I thank you for everything you've given us, this wonderful, this wonderful world, this grass and the sky and the trees and all the abundance of new things we come by every day. And I thank you for everyone I've met in my life. I thank you for all the people who've been so kind to me, have given me so many opportunities and who have given me so many things. I've learned so much. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
My name is Elliot Futrell. I go to James Madison Middle School and I am in sixth grade.
My name is Rowan Clark. I go to North Cross and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Brownie Polly. I go to James Madison Middle School and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Matthew Feldman. I go to James Madison Middle School and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Gabrielle Arfer. I go to Hidden Valley and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Robert Graham. I go to Cave Spring and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is, my name is Justice Horner. I go to North Cross and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Paul Schuler. I go to North Cross and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Jamie Davis. I go to North Cross and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Nathan Aiken and I go to Hidden Valley and I'm in 9th grade.
My name is Charlie Jackson. I go to North Cross and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Harper Patterson. I go to North Cross and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Will Jackson. I go to North Cross and I'm in 9th grade.
My name is Jackson Patterson. I go to North Cross and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Hudson Lawrence. I go to North Cross and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Griffin Brakel. I go to James Madison Middle School and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Benjamin Dalsey. I go to Patrick Henry High School and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Micah Hill and I'm in 10th grade at Patrick Henry.
Good day, mayor. Cub Scout Pack Two is also here. They came in a minute ago. They're not with us, but they're young men here from Cub Scout Pack Number Two.
All right, has everybody had a chance?
My name is Bear Hopson. I go to Highland Park Elementary and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Ray Rigby and I go to Highland Park Elementary and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Simon Whaley. I go to Wasina and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Henry Sawyer. I'm homeschooled and I'm in 4th grade.
Well, we're certainly proud to have each of you here tonight. And remember, you can see yourself on the screen, but on Thursday at 7 o'clock, you'll be back on TV again. I want you to take note of that. Thursday and Saturday from 10, this says 2:00, but 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM, you see yourselves on TV. So you can tell your friends and everybody that you made the big screen. I want that. Pardon me?
What channel? What channel?
Oh, RBTV, Channel 3. RBTV, Channel 3. And I'm sure your parents know, you'll find out which radio you are. I want to ask the leaders now, you guys, you can't let them do it. You got to stand up and tell us who you are and thank you for your service in helping these young men become leaders of tomorrow.
Thank you. My name is James Brakel and I've been a citizen here all my life. Great place to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Schuler. I live in Roanoke and thank you very much for hosting us this evening.
Hi, Jonathan Graham. Recently moved to Roanoke from Pennsylvania. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name's David Lawrence. I'm the scoutmaster of Troop 17, St. John's Church, and we thank you so much for letting us be part of this session.
Greetings. Good evening. My name's Jared Rigby. I'm the Weebleows One Den Leader for Pack Two at Raleigh Court Presbyterian Church. And also a big thank you for Mr. Cobb, who's going to come on the 29th and answer our Cub Scouts questions that they have and will generate from tonight's meeting. So thank you, Councilman Cobb and to all of you.
All right, thank you again. Let's give the scouts and their leaders a hand. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. All right, before we go any further, Councilman Jeffrey has some other statement he wants to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to take this off because my glasses always falls up and, and I can't see and talk at the same time. But thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to talk about this past weekend. This past weekend, we saw some shootings in our community. And I think we're all saddened by the fact that this continued gun violence has been taking place. Unfortunately, my family is sadly is part of this fraternity of families who have been struck by gun violence. My brother-in-law was shot and killed on Williamson Road on Sunday morning. And as well as you saw in the news that he was tragically killed outside of Williamson Road. I just want to make a brief comment about this. First of all, I wanted to thank all the people who do know, who have sent prayers and texts and phone calls. I want to thank my colleagues as well for their support as my family goes through this. But the reason why I'm really sitting here and having this conversation, I really want to reiterate the fact that we need to truly need to stop this violence and this gun violence in our city. Our city, we've been working hard to try to resolve this, but it's clear that we need more work to be done. And I just want to stress this to the community, please, there's better ways to resolve issues than gun violence and than the use of guns. And so I would continually to do the work of championing. I appreciate Councilman Cobb and chairing the gun violence prevention. And I just wanted to say, please, let's really look at what's going on because it will hit everyone. If it affects me and my family, it will affect anyone in this community. And we really need to start understanding it's not just one pocket in the community. It's our whole community that's being impacted by gun violence. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for taking this time, for letting me share a few words about this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Robert, and our deepest condolences to you and your family. All right, let's go now through the agenda. The first thing on the agenda is the certification of closed meeting. And Vice Mayor will make that motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certify to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
Is that second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll ask our clerk now to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Aye. Sorry. Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and thank you for that. All right, let me reiterate again. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. All right, first agenda item today, tonight for the public hearing is a request of Good Samaritan Hospice to repeal all conditions previously proper as part of a previous rezoning adopted by ordinance number 33457-070797 on property located at Old Cove Road Northwest and to rezone the property from residential multifamily district to institutional planned unit development district, subject to a development plan. Ben Crew, a Blazer and associate, is his spokesperson. Is Mr. Crew here? All right, thank you, Mr. Crew. We got to vote on an ordinance. Can I get someone to...
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the title of paragraph.
An ordinance to repeal all conditions proffered as part of previous rezonings on certain property located at Zero Cove Road Northwest bearing official tax map number 6410111 through the adoption of ordinance number 33457-070797, adopted on July 7, 1997. Rezoning certain property located at Zero Cove Road Northwest bearing official tax map number 6410111 from RMF Residential Multifamily District to INPUD Institutional Plan Unit Development District, subject to the development plan that specifies uses, location of buildings and infrastructure, site access, and building design, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission approved this request on a 5-0 vote. At this time, I recognize Mr. Crew. If he wants to come and have words or just respond to possible questions from council.
I have your responding questions.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And we don't have anybody that signed up, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
To speak to this issue? All right, so with that being said, I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments or questions.
I do have one.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, but I just want to comment once again on the good work that Good Samaritan does in our community. Several years ago now, my wife lost both her grandparents and her mother within a very short time of each other. And she attended some grief support group at Good Sam and it helped her a lot. And I know that they've helped many others, many families in it through difficult times when a loved one is reaching the end of their life. So I just want to thank them again and commend them for everything that they're doing.
All right, thank you. Any other comment? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. The only, it's not really a question, but I do need to ask it either to the planning staff or either to the clerk. The adjoining property owners, there was 14, and I didn't see a copy in the report listing those adjoining property owners. So I looked them up and there was 14. And my question is, were they notified?
Yes, they were notified.
Okay.
It's just, I believe that second page is not listed here, but we will get to the second page.
Okay, no problem. That was all. I just want to make sure they were aware of the projects. I think it's a great project that is being done there. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crew. All right, item number two is the request of Franklin Road LLC to vacate an alley running north from Franklin Road Southwest towards Luck Avenue Southwest adjacent to property located at 117 Franklin Road Southwest. David Jones is the agent spokesperson. And this item has been continued until Monday, December the 13th, 2021, at 1:30 PM here in the council chamber. Thank you. Thank you. All right, item number three is a request of Greater Rowanoke Transit Company to vacate a 10-foot-wide alley between and parallel to 11th Street Southeast and 12th Street Southeast. Kevin Price, the general manager, is the spokesperson. And this item has also been continued until Monday, December the 13th, 2021, at 1:30 PM here in the council chamber. Item number four is a request of the City of Rowanoke to amend Chapter 36.2 zoning code, Code of the City of Rowanoke, 1979, as amended for clarification and consistency with state Mr. Wayne Leffrich is the agent and his spokesperson. And I think Wayne is here. Yeah?
Aye, and I'm going to pass this on to Acting Planning Building Director, Jillian Moore.
All right, welcome. All right, we got an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Section 36.2-311, use table for residential districts. Section 36.2-312, dimensional regulations for residential districts. Section 36.2-315, use table for multiple purpose districts. Section 36.2-316, dimensional regulations for multiple purpose districts. Section 36.2-322, use table for industrial districts. Section 36.2-323, dimensional regulations for industrial districts. Section 36.2-327, use table for planned unit development districts. Section 36.2-333, flood plain overlay district F. Section 36.2-403, accessory uses and structures. Section 36.2-652, minimum parking. Section 36.2-653, maximum parking. Appendix A, definitions. Appendix B, submittal requirements. Appendix C, agreements of Chapter 36.2 zoning of the Code of the City of Rowanoke as amended for the purposes of amending and reordaining the following code sections to update, clarify, and make the city's zoning ordinance easier to use for its citizens and consistent with state law, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission approved this request on a 5-0 vote. And now at this time, I'll recognize Miss Moore for, on behalf of the petition, for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a lot there, reading into the record. And the key phrase there is making, making the zoning code easier for its citizens, and that really is the goal here. My name again is Jillian Papa-More. I'm the acting director of Planning, Building, and Development. And I'm pleased to be here this evening on behalf of our department to bring to you what is really the first, the first implementation of City Plan 2040, which, as you know, was adopted back in December of 2020. And we're really excited to request your permission to begin to implement those development-related policies and actions from City Plan 2040 through these amendments to the zoning code. Just as a reminder, there are three key issues that we are looking to address with this amendment, and those are as follows. The first being to remove a regulatory barrier from the process to permit accessory apartments within the residential districts. And that regulatory barrier being this requirement for, to obtain a special exception before allowing this use in our residential districts now. Secondly, we're looking to permit alternative energy sources and defining those clearly and explicitly through accessory uses, which also includes supplemental regulations. And lastly, we are looking to eliminate minimum parking in all districts. It is currently not required in some of our districts. We have extensive parking reductions, and again, making this code easier for its citizens. We welcome the opportunity to hear your feedback and respond to technical questions at our November 1 briefing. What I took away from, from that briefing are really three key issues that warranted further consideration from planning staff. The first, heard a couple of council members or several council members express some concern about accessory apartments, and really the, the issue of separately metering accessory apartments as being another barrier potentially to this use. And that is something that we will continue to evaluate its regulatory value versus it being a barrier. And I think that is something that we will consider bringing back as a future amendment as considering other ways to address that regulatory barrier. The second had, had to do again with accessory apartments and the use and, and, you know, it really is a way to create more appropriate uses in, appropriate housing choices and opportunities for people in all neighborhoods. And if we want to continue to encourage and promote this use, we, we will be intentional in looking at how to clearly align H2 guidelines through user guides for accessory apartments because they do align with both the reuse of existing structures as well as compatible, what could be construed as tiny home infill in the backyard of existing, existing single-family lots. The third, and I'll attempt to tackle this, was outreach. There was a broad concern about outreach, not just about this specific issue, but also just generally on, on various city topics. But I did want to take this opportunity to outline the steps that planning staff has taken surrounding outreach with regard to these, this specific issue and, and these amendments before you tonight. We began the process to discuss these three major issues approximately five months ago, beginning with the Planning Commission Work Session on June 11th. Since that time, the text amendments have appeared on Planning Commission agendas throughout each and every month up until Octo, October when they, or I'm sorry, November when they voted. Planning staff in the month of September partnered with RV TV, and we created a public service announcement, which we shared on planrowanoke.org. We shared it on the city's main Facebook page, the planning department page. Additionally, we hosted in October 28th, in, in conjunction with the Office of Community Engagement, we hosted a virtual question and answer session, and that was hosted on Facebook Live and broadcast to the city's main Facebook page. And that was actually viewed more than 600 times. We also employed traditional methods of outreach in, as this item appeared on Planning Commission Work Sessions in the month of July, August, September, October. Planning staff sent out over 28,000 emails with opportunities to visit the site, review the information, potentially come to the, or make comment at one of those meetings. And that was again sent to the over 1,400 subscribers to our, our city, city business, our city emails. And those are again directed to Rowanoke Neighborhood News, Planning News, and Media. We briefed this council on November 1st, which we talked about. And finally, we presented to Planning Commission on November 8th and gladly accepted their endorsement in the form of a recommendation of a 5-0 vote. And again, we are honored to be here to request your support in implementing City Plan 2040 and happy to answer any questions you may have about these amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Are there, well, first I want to make sure, do we have any citizens to sign up?
No, sir. We do not have any citizens on this matter.
Well, we'll open the public hearing, which we did, and there seems to be no one that has signed up to speak on this request. So I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments that they'd like to make.
I just have one.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, so Ms. Moore, I just have, you've mentioned the amendments that we talked about, the accessory apartments. So this has nothing to do with this, what we're doing today, correct? You going to bring that back or, or consider it or?
Yes.
Have a discussion about it?
Yes, it is something that we cert, I certainly heard, we discussed it as planning staff and, and really considered, again, the regulatory value of what we're trying to accomplish in, in controlling that specific requirement, that accessory apartments. And if you direct your attention to the, there are the supplemental regulations that are specific to the accessory apartment use. And we discussed at our briefing that there was a concern about the metering having to be, it could not be separately metered.
Connected, right, right.
And I heard several members, really, it seemed a concern, seemed to be another barrier. And we're not able to change that in this round, but we, we update the zoning code every single year, if not more, and, and we intend to bring that back if that indeed is a concern or proves to be a further barrier to the use.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you will consider bringing it back because I, I do personally think that that is a major barrier because I think I talked to a couple of my colleagues, and if you have parents or grandparents, their, their obligations and financial obligations are separate than, than yours, and they need to be maintained that way. So having a joint meter, to me, didn't seem to be a good idea. That personally, I think, would be a barrier. So hopefully it doesn't just get lost in, you know, along the way. I would like to see that come back.
We'll be glad to come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not the only one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments by council members? All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number five is a proposal of the City of Rowanoke to consider a request of Local Office on Aging Incorporated for tax exemption of real property located at 4902 Furniture Road Northwest. Robert S. Cowell Jr., our city manager, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Rowanoke owned by Local Office on Aging, Inc., a Virginia nonstop, nonprofit corporation devoted exclusively to charitable or benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'll recognize the city manager at this time if he has any comments that he'd like to make.
The only thing in this apply for this item and the next item, just for purposes of clarification, that whenever a request similar to this is made by a nonprofit or tax exempt or nonprofit organization, it's first made to the Commissioner of Revenue, which has a very explicit direction out of the state code that authorizes when this can be granted. And the practice here has been unless it falls squarely within that, that is not honored at that level, and it comes here before you all. So that's the practice, and that's why you'll see, every year, you'll see a couple of these come forward, and that's the case with both of these. And then you'll see in your packet, there's a series of questions that they are to respond to that really only you all can ultimately review and decide whether or not it warrants the, the status that has been requested. So just, just by way of clarification, happy to answer any questions. I believe there's actually a representative here from LOA as well, should you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I don't have any notes of anyone willing to speak, Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
All right. Since there are no citizens wishing to be heard on this matter, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none, then Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right. All right. Thank you, and thank you for coming, man. And watch yourselves on TV now this week.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you for coming. I saw one back there in the back.
All right, item number six is a proposal of the City of Rowanoke to consider a request of Blue Ridge Land Conservancy for tax exemption of real property located at 1305 Maple Avenue Southeast. And Robert S. Cowell Jr. is the spokesperson. There's a ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Rowanoke owned by Blue Ridge Land Conservancy, a Virginia nonstop, nonprofit corporation devoted exclusively to charitable or benevolent purposes on nonprofit basis, on a nonprofit basis, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. And now I recognize the city manager for any comments that he'd like to have.
No further comments unless you have any questions.
All right. With that being said, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there are any citizens wishing to be heard.
Yes, sir, we have one speaker, David Perry.
Excuse me, what's the name again?
David Perry.
All right, Mr. Perry.
I prepared some comments, and it seems like a pretty straightforward process, so I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have. Otherwise, I'll just help move things along and hold those comments back.
Okay, thank you. With no other citizens wishing to be heard on this matter, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best Pitch?
The application, as I read, it said that this is 1305 Maple Avenue Southwest, but the ordinance reads 1305 Maple Avenue Southeast. I believe this property is located in Old Southwest. It should be.
Correct.
Southwest and not southeast. So just so we don't have to come back next month for a scrivener's error to correct this, I move that we amend the ordinance to change in the fourth whereas clause to change 1305 Maple Avenue Southeast to 1305 Maple Avenue, Maple Avenue Southwest.
Second the amended request.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on that?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and so this proposal has been amended to show 1305 Maple Avenue Southwest instead of Southeast. All right, are there any further comments by members of council? Heard none, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll on the amended proposal. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll on the amended proposal on 1305 Maple Avenue Southwest.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you all. All right, item number seven is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to consider the sale of property located at the Old Norfolk Avenue Southwest to TLC Properties Incorporated. Robert S. Cowell Jr., the City Manager, is the spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute the necessary documents, providing for the conveyance of a parcel of city-owned property consisting of 0.0786 acres, more or less bearing official tax map number 1110713 to TLC Properties, Inc., upon certain terms and conditions, repealing ordinance number 22476 adopted September 29, 1975, in order to facilitate the sale of said property and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize the City Manager for any comments he may have.
Only quick comments are this is property that we, as noted in the staff report, that we acquired as a part of the bridge project in the area in 1986. It's a very small piece of property that has a billboard located on it, which has been leased through, since that time. And Lamar Advertising has requested the opportunity to purchase the property, and that's what you have before you as well. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask our clerk, are there any people signed up to speak on this proposal?
No, sir.
All right. With that being said, I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any questions or comments. All right, seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number eight is to receive public comment on the use of 2022 entitlement funding for multi-grants and unprogrammed 2020 CARES Act funding to address eligible needs related to the development of the city's 2022 HUD Annual Action Plan. And at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
All right. Did you say no?
No, we do not have any citizens.
Thank you. All right, there are no citizens wishing to be heard, then I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if there are any comments that they have. All right, apparently not, so. Do you call a roll on this, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
Okay. Item number nine is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to amend the city's code with regards to the disposable plastic bag tax. Robert S. Cowell Jr. is the spokesperson for this proposal. There is an ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining ordinance number 42062-051721 adopted by City Council on May 17, 2021, to define and redefine certain terms to maintain consistency with guidelines promulgated by the Virginia Department of Taxation upon certain terms and conditions, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'll now recognize the City Manager for any comments that he would like to make.
And my name is actually on it, but it actually is the city attorney's item, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Spencer.
Okay.
Mayor, this is what happens sometimes when you're the first in Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a specific ordinance. Now, the state complimented us on our ordinance, but there were a few items that they believed that they wanted to change on the guidelines, and that mainly deals with the definition of the terms grocery store, convenience store, and drugstore. So the state altered those. So in very short terms, what we're trying to do is make sure that our ordinance follows those guidelines. And with the state having changed those definitions, we're looking to make ours more in conformity. Also want to take time, Your Honor, I mean, Mr. Mayor, to go off in the court, to compliment David Collins on his work on this bag ordinance. He's done an excellent job in moving this through. It's one of the reasons why we were the first in Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a plastic bag ordinance. So I ask that council please consider these amendments and adopt such. Thank you.
Thank you. David, you here, was David here?
No.
He was here earlier, I don't.
I thought I saw him earlier. He must have left. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Nobody's here to sign up, nobody's here to speak on that, ma'am?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues on council if they have any comments. All right, Vice Mayor, I'll come to you.
Okay. I just have one question, since we are still shooting for our targeted date of January 1, 2022. There's still a little ambiguity with the, how it's going to work, who's going to have to pay for it, whether it's going to be on the, on the, you know, where are the, when are we going to see the guidelines, I guess I'm saying, because this is November, and we're supposed to implement January 2022. No one has seen the guidelines, the stores are still not.
They're out, there was a letter sent out several weeks ago, and there's been a couple.
Who did it go to, all of the stores or just?
All the ones that are applicable, and then there have been at least, I think, two kind of Zoom meetings to interact with folks regarding that as well.
Well, that's good, at least the stores know. What about our residents, because they are clueless, they don't know that this is.
Yeah, I mean, that's the broader kind of public awareness campaign that's underway. There's things that are, obviously, things on the website as well as through social media, as well as we've even taken out bus ads and a number of other things. And we're actually distributing bags as well that has additional information. But that'll be ongoing all the way up through.
Yeah, I was just wondering, yeah, what kind of campaign do we have? It's pretty aggressive then, since we have such a short window, I'm sure.
Yeah, and it was in the, in your most recent update, there's a pretty detailed piece. And we'll keep adding to it because we want to make certain that folks are less surprised than they're going to be.
Yeah.
People are going to still be, you're still going to have folks that are saying.
They're going to still be surprised, I was just wondering if we were really, because I saw the update, I was just wondering if we're really reaching the people who it's going to be impacted by it, but thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll reach the folks. If you remember, in the way that the statute is written, proceeds can only be used for certain purposes, and one of those is really targeting folks that are WIP recipients, SNAP recipients. They will know definitely through this process because we're reaching out to them and connecting them with bags. Most likely, the folks that will not necessarily know will be the ones that aren't those recipients, that have not, for whatever reason, seen any of the other items that are on there, although there's been a significant amount of news coverage about this as well, who will show up at the store and see the charge for the bags.
So where are the bags, because normally they're like laying across the dice here?
They're all over, because we're actually using several different ways. So we're also, there are bags that have been provided specifically for this purpose, but we're also using bags that we would normally give out at parks and recreation events, library events, and those types of things as well. And those, again, that'll keep going on because the proceeds are very limited what we can use this for, and that's what we'll focus the most on, is making certain we can get those bags.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comment?
Down this.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Actually, I was, I actually was going to comment on the outreach because actually I've seen many avenues of where we're getting the message out about this change on January 1st. And I was actually going to compliment you because I've seen it on the buses, I've seen letters, I've seen some of the grocery store owners who actually I've talked to have received those letters regarding that. And I was just, just actually going to compliment you guys on the work on.
Yeah, that's true.
And we still got work to do, but from what I've seen, I've continually seen this message out consistently out in the community.
I appreciate that, certainly the work of Neil Boyle and Lauren Waldron in our office as well. But they'll continue to work on that because, again, it's a new, it's a new tax, so it's new information we need to get folks aware of.
All right. Let's move on.
Thank you. I too wanted to just say that the Housing Authority is hoping to eliminate the plastic bag tax for its residents while it's also doing a canned good drive. They are hoping to provide all of its residents with reusable grocery bags. And the canned, the food drive is going through the month of November. They wanting to help their residents out by giving them the reusable bags and canned goods in order to help them with food, to make sure they have a good meal around the holidays. They are currently helping about 1,500 residents, and they are hoping to gather more than 6,000 items, so each family has a variety of food for the holidays. So if council members or the administration or even the public would like to participate in this food drive, you can drop off any of your canned goods at the central office of the Housing Authority. But thank you for the work you're doing, Bob, with regards to getting the message out on the plastic bag tax.
Zoom, well, since you're the liaison over there, can you give the public the address of the central?
Yes, it's 2627 Selentown Pike.
Okay. All right, Mr. Best Pitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question, and then a comment, and the question is, have we encouraged the retail establishments that will be affected by this to post a notice on their door or window? I mean, most people that go to the grocery store go to the same grocery store over and over, they go to the same drugstore, go to the same convenience store. But if they put a notice up there effective January 1, we will be charging five cents per plastic bag, and we encourage you to use reusable bags. I think in terms of making sure that the public is aware, that would be one of the best ways because that's where, that's where people are going to notice it. That's where they're going to wake up and say, wait a minute. And so the comment that I have is really related to that. Mr. Cowell mentioned that there's limited ways in which these funds can be used. And I'm sure that we're going to have some collections in the first part of 2022, and that will help us to pay for the bags that we're going to give to the SNAP and WIP recipients. My hope is that the amount of tax that is collected every month will decline until we get to zero. I'm never going to pay five cents for a plastic bag. I'm just telling you right now, I'm not going to do it. I've mentioned in a previous discussion on this issue several months ago, I have a canvas bag that I used for several years in Richmond before we moved to Roanoke, and we've been in Roanoke for 31 years, almost 32 now, and I'm still using that bag. So, and I have quite a few, a number of others. So anyway, I just want to make emphasis that this is not intended to be a fundraising mechanism for the city treasury. This is to encourage people to think about the environment, think about their responsibility to help us keep a clean and healthy environment here in the city of Roanoke, and don't pay five cents for a bag. That's crazy. Get a reusable bag and use it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch. And I tell you, with the cost of groceries going up as fast as they are, you won't have too much problem convincing them not to spend five cents for a bag with inflation. So that's, that's, I think we'll see that as the cost of food, period, just skyrocketing. Any other comments? All right, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, now we're down to other business. And we have an ARB matter here. Item 1A is a petition for appeal filed by Albert Mack, appealing a decision of the Architectural Review Board denying a request to install K-style gutters at 531 Day Avenue Southwest. Albert Mack is the spokesperson. He coming up, Mr. Mack, we'll get to you here. And item 1B is report of the Architectural Review Board recommending that City Council affirm its decision to deny the request, which is not consistent with H2 guidelines. Bill Mason, which is Mason, is the acting chair, chairman, and spokesperson. All right, and at this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Mack for his opening remarks. Smack, welcome to the podium.
Thanks, sir. Excuse me. When I talk, my glasses get fogged up too, and I kind of get muffled. I'm a new resident at Roanoke, and I purchased this house back in August. And Mr. Belcher here has been doing some work on the house for me. We had the foundation reporaged, all the cracks sealed, and I just want the best product for the house. So I consulted with Mr. Michael here, because I keep forgetting his last name. And so he recommended the gutters. We made the application, it was denied, and so I'd like to appeal it because I'm trying to keep the integrity of the house since it's a new purchase, and I've put a lot of work into it as far as the outside getting it where it needs to be, so I don't have a lot of worries as time goes on, because it's not a place that I plan on leaving, not of my own free will. This was my last move after a lot of years in the military and civil service. This is where I decided home was going to be, and when I found the house, that's where I want it to be. So we talked about it, we agreed. I think his recommendation was good, we took it to council, they denied it. So I just wanted to appeal it to y'all, and I'll let Mr. Belcher speak because he's my subject matter expert, if that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and all those here. I'm Michael Belcher, Legacy Home Builders is the name of my company, and thank you for your service to this fine city. I've lived here all my life except for military service myself, and after leaving the military, there was no choice but to come back home and to start a business, and I'm honored to do that. In meeting, in doing business, you meet people like Mr. Mack, who has settled in Roanoke and wants the very best for his home. And when he asked me the question, what is, I have no gutters on this property. What is the best gutter that I can put on this property to preserve the longevity of this asset? And that clearly was a K-style gutter. There was some slight confusion when we met previously with the Architectural Review Committee on exactly what a K-style gutter is. There's a company called K Guard. They provide a gutter screen that goes on to a K-style traditional gutter, like most all of us have in our homes. Years ago, there was a half-round gutter. That was all that was on the market, that was what was acceptable, and that was your only choice. As time has gone on, more guttering options have developed, such as the K-style gutter. It has a better profile look, almost like crown molding on the outside. There's not as many seams, the corners do not leak like a normal half-round gutter system would. It is clearly a better gutter. And talking with Mr. Mack about his options to meet a middle ground, so to speak, between a half-round gutter and a K-style gutter, which is traditionally white in color, he has said that he is willing to pay the extra cost to have the coil stock, which is what the gutters are made out of, a solid color that would match the fascia of the home. This would allow. This would allow the gutter system to not stand out. Uh, it would blend in with his subfascia and would be the best gutter system that he could have on the home without destroying any kind of, uh, structural integrity or historical significance, in my opinion, of the home. I have, um, a, a video, I'm happy to show it if, if you feel it's necessary, of why that quarter round or half-round gutters, uh, do not work over time. There are many that are leaking right on Day Avenue, where he's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this home. And Day Avenue is becoming more marketable than ever. People are coming to Day Avenue and investing money in the historic district area, uh, not just because it's a circle district, but because they want to be close to the amenities that the city has to offer. That's why he chose Roanoke, um, and I hope you would consider his appeal, and happy to answer any questions that you'd have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And thank you both for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate that. All right, at this time, I'm pleased to recognize Ms. Mason from the ARB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, and, uh, appreciate your efforts here in that House, uh, doing a lot of good there. Um, this is a, uh, we had a split decision at the ARB, 2-3, 2-4, 2 against, um, and the, the portion of the, uh, the guidelines that, uh, speak to this, the use of half-round gutters and round downspouts is preferable to the use of OG, and that's the K style, or corrugated gutters and downspouts. So it's preferable. Three preferred that they use the half-round, two preferred that, uh, that the K-style gutter was acceptable.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them up me at this point.
All right, uh, members of council, Mr. Best Pitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mason, I understand that the ARB is in the process of, uh, developing some amendments to the guidelines that I guess will be coming for us for endorsement at some point in the future.
It is my hope that that is undertaken. I have not seen that begin, but I believe it's time. I think we're, uh, 20 years since the last review of the guidelines, so I think we need citizen input and your input, and everybody get a chance to, to look at these things again and, and update them.
Based on, on your experience with the ARB and, and your, uh, personal ownership of property within the historic district, is this a guideline that you think should be amended?
Yes, sir.
And you think it should be amended to allow the type of guttering that Mr. Mack is requesting?
That's my opinion, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any question?
I think, uh, Trish, then I'll come.
Hey, I'm going to just call you. When I call, just go ahead.
Okay, no problem.
Well, I got a quick in my neck going back there. Uh, Ms. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, Mr. Mason, I don't know if you could answer this or not, but I looked at the minutes, and I noticed that the board member, Mr. Swain, made the motion to approve the application, and it was seconded by Mr. Keppely. But I noticed the vote was you and Mr. Keppely that voted yes, and that Mr. Swain voted no. And I was confused by that, since he made the motion to approve, was, it was that...
That's just our process.
That's your process.
Is you, you make the motion to approve, that's not saying how you're going to vote.
I was just putting it on the floor.
Yes.
Okay, and the other thing was you had two members that were absent, and I just felt that, uh, and, and I would prefer to, uh, make the motion to have this, uh, sent back, perhaps to be reconsidered, because you had two members that were absent, and because the vote was so close, I think it would have been more appropriate to allow the other two, uh, Ms. Gutshaw and Mr. Home, to have a, had a voice in this decision, because it could have still easily went the other way had they been present and went with the approval. It could have easily went four...
Conceivable, yes, ma'am.
To three. So since it was so close, that would be what I would recommend, that, uh, when it's all, when we have finished our comments, that that's the motion that I will make.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other comments by members of council?
I, I just had one comment.
Best pitch.
Thank you. I, I did notice that on the application, Mr. Mack, you noticed that there were five other homes with, with this type style, uh, gutter, and, you know, you have to wonder how, how they got by. You know, you have five already, so I, I can understand your, your, your need for an appeal because we've got to have some consistency somewhere, so, um, I just wanted to, to, to say that I did notice that, and I'm pretty sure that had a lot, uh, to do with your appeal and why you felt it was necessary, looking at five other houses on the same street, you know. So, yeah. That's all, Mr. Mayor, it's just...
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me say that, uh, I think everybody here knows that I have been one of the strongest supporters of the Architecture Review Board, owned a home in the historic district for some 27 years, and tried every way I could to preserve the historic character of the outside appearance of that home. Uh, I'm, I'm not one who is quick to overturn the ARB decision. I do think in this particular case that this, this is something that should be, uh, considered. I think that it, it is time, as, as Mr. Mason indicated, to do a more thorough review of the guidelines and hopefully come back with some recommendations on, on things that should be changed, and, I mean, maybe some things need to be tightened up. I don't know. But, uh, I, I think that this is one that, uh, really should be changed. My only hesitation, and I, I want everybody to take this into consideration, is that if we have a historic ordinance and we have guidelines, and we just have people coming down here every time they don't like the decision, and we just say, oh, well, okay, let's, let's go. Pretty soon, we don't have a historic ordinance. We don't. And that means we're not protecting the investment of the people who are working very hard to do the right thing in the neighborhood and keep the historic character of the outside appearance of their homes. So I just want to try to emphasize that, but in this particular situation, I would, uh, reverse my usual position and be willing to vote in favor of overturning the decision.
All right. Any other thoughts?
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Mayor? Is it possible we can show the video that Mr.?
Hold on a minute, Mr. Mack, let me get back to you. Are, are you done?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mack, you can come back to the podium.
I just want to know, would it be possible for us to show the video that Mr. Belcher has of the home that's actually right next door to, to my home, that has the, the gutters that the Historic Society, um, recommended? And he actually caught the video when it was raining, so you could see the, the integrity of the gutter that is on the house that they want me to put on my house. And that was one of the main reasons why I decided to appeal after seeing the video.
Well, we can't, I think, and I may be wrong, that the council may, uh, rule in favor of you.
Yes, sir. Either, either way. Okay. I, I will let y'all vote now.
Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, the floor is ready to entertain a motion now. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Based, based upon the evidence, testimony, and documents presented to this council at today's hearing, I move that the decision of the City of Roanoke Architectural Review Board on September 9th, 2021 be reversed and that a City of appropriate, Certificate of Appropriateness be issued to allow the installation of K-style gutters on the house at 531 Day Avenue Southwest as set forth in the application for Certificate of Appropriateness on the grounds that the proposed installation and location are architecturally compatible with the structures or historic landmarks in the H2 district.
Second.
All right, let's remove and second it. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on that motion?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the motion to reverse, uh, the action taken by the ARB has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now down to, thank you, Ms. Mason. Thank you. Uh, we're now down to item number C, which is hearing of citizens upon public matters. Uh, we have one speaker that has signed up, uh, Stephen Provost. Yes, sir. Come on down, Mr. Provost.
Thank you to the council for hearing me. Um, I'm a local author. I'm actually from Martinsville, and I have a series of books that I am writing about small and middle-sized cities in the 20th century. And the first book in this series, there are seven so far, but the first book is on Roanoke, and it's called Roanoke Century. And so I was coming down here to give you, as representatives of the city, a complimentary copy of this book. Uh, it chronicles the history of Roanoke in the 20th century by year, and it's intended to capture the important and sometimes kind of odd and quirky things that happen in a city. Things like the, the Mickermack Grocery Store, um, the origins of that, the, when was the star put up? When was the Patrick Henry motel, or hotel, put up? A lot of different milestones that took place during the 20th century. My concept is to remind people of history. I think history is a very important thing that we remember, where we came from as people in our own cities. If, if I write something, I want people to either say, wow, I forgot that happened, or, boy, I never knew about that. If we remember where we came from, we know how to do things better in the future. We can learn from our mistakes, and we can learn from what we've done right in the past. But more than that, this is just fun. History is fun for me. I'm, I may be old school in that, but I just enjoy finding out facts. And as I wrote these books, as I wrote this book in particular, I found out so many interesting things about Roanoke, and I just wanted to share those things with the citizens of Roanoke. So, as I said, I'm going to give you a copy of this complimentary. It's available on Amazon. But, uh, free pitch, self-pitch there. Um, but it's, uh, I've also written books about Huntington, West Virginia, Charleston, West Virginia, Danville, Virginia. Martinsville was my first book, Martinsville Memories. That's where I live. I'm actually from the West Coast, so I've written books about some cities on the West Coast as well. And, uh, history is just a passion for me, and I hope that, uh, to share some of that passion with you and with, uh, fellow residents of your city, I am very thankful. Went around taking pictures of your city and, and the landmarks here, and just enjoyed the heck out of it. Um, did, did a lot of research to find out the important things that have gone on over the years from 1900 to 1999. And it's, as I said, it's just fascinating, and I want to thank you guys, thank your city for being so hospitable to me as I did this, and, uh, again, thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
What final pitch? Just hold it up. There's a camera. There you are. Nice.
And should I give this to the clerk?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's our only, person only speaker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, there being no further business to come before the council. Uh, the council meeting will be declared in recess until Monday, November 29th, uh, 2021, at 12:00 noon, when we will be meeting at the Melrose Library for a City Council Budget Planning Session. November 29th, 2021, at 12:00 noon, at the Melrose Library. All right? Okay. Thank you all, and everybody have a blessed week. Council is in recess.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thanks, ma'am.
I just, I say happy Thanksgiving to your residents.
Yeah. [laughing]